Okay, Alan, we're on.
Call on it, Mike.
Don't want to work. Either that or it's smarter than I am. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. This is the April meeting for the Ballast County Council on Board of Appeals. For those of you that have never been here, let me give you a quick rundown of how we operate so you can keep up with us. I will call each case by case number and case name. Staffs will come to the lectern. They will present the information that was in the application so that we can discuss it. There could possibly be questions and/or discussions among members or back and forth to staff. Once we have heard from that part, I would ask if the applicant or if someone is here representing the applicant would like to give us any additional information. If so, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you would like for us to take under advisement. Again, there will be probable discussions and/or questions back and forth, multiple board members and the participant. If there are multiple people here that are in support, we would like to have that information for us. If you are satisfied with the information that has been presented, there's no need to give it to us two or three times. If you feel like information has not been given to us that you think is important, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record. Give us the information you'd like for us to take under advisement. When we have heard from the pro side, then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition or if any persons are here that have questions about what is being requested. If so, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, give us the information you would like for us to take under advisement. Please try to give us the information as fully as you can when you have the chance so that we don't have rebuttal and re-rebuttal and back and forth. We'd like to try to get it all at one time. It is normally the situation that we render a decision here today. However, it is in the bylaw that should we feel like information is lacking or parties need to discuss options, we do have the right to postpone action until the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay, as asked earlier, I think somebody else has come in, but please sign in in the back for us. The first case we're going to call is Lous County Case VAR 2017-04 GDV Capital Group LLC. Carmella, you have the show.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, board members. Our first case is a county case. This is a request for a variance to our lot access, lot furnished requirement. Sub property consists of 2.6 acres. It's located on Clatson Road. Clatson Road is an unproved dirt road that connects Valdell Road with US 41 North. In this case, I believe on page three of the staff report, the applicant is attempting to get a survey recorded and find our review. So where this 2.69 acres doesn't have any signage on the county maintained road, however, we also found that the property does have a recorded ingress egress easement to the property. On the slide there, you can see on the right side of the property, which side of the property where there's a travel lane there. There's also a photo where you can actually see the travel path that they use to access the property. Property owner is represented today by Mr. Moser, but he's just trying to get this survey recorded and without a variance, you know, he cannot get the survey recorded. So staff are comfortable that there is a recorded easement on the property and that this company does, that they have a way to get to and from their property without someone restricting that access. So we are recommending approval with no conditions.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions or discussions among board members at this time?
I have a question. Doesn't that easement relieve the access of the property?
No, the county doesn't recognize easements as a formal means of access. All properties have to have direct access on the county.
But this lot was already existing?
It was created by deed. It was created by deed and deeds are created all the time. It doesn't need our standards.
Any other questions or discussions? Thank you, Carmella. Is there anyone here that would like to give us any additional information or are you satisfied with what has been presented?
May I please, the board, very briefly?
Yes, sir.
My name is Gary Mosher, 1706 North Patterson. I represent GDV Capital Group LLC. This property was initially split up and configured in the way it is, I think about in 1978. Although Carmella said it's an easement, actually as to this property, the original deed conveyed it as part of the property. Other subsequent deeds call it an easement. It is an easement as to the property that is contiguous to this property that's south of it. There's a piece of property, Carmella, if you'll put that back to us, let me show it real quick. There's a piece of property with a home, a very nice home as a matter of fact. You see the home right here. This is an easement as to this property and it comes back here and actually comes into this property back here as well. This property was allowed by former owners to fall into disrepair. My client bought it at a tax sale in the shrine of revival and make it a viable piece of taxable property on the Lous County tax records. And we would very much appreciate it if you would grant the easement so that we could go in, he could go in, do the work and put it back on the market, increase its tax value. If you should have any questions, glad to answer.
First question I have is what is the intended purpose for the property?
Well, eventually, just like it was before, it becomes a residential property.
Okay, so either planning on either rebuilding or probably tearing down and starting over?
Tearing down and starting over because if you can see what's out there right now.
I saw it there, it'd be tough.
There's not much left of that place there. In fact, it looks like it's really a mobile home as opposed to anything else. But he has some people that are interested in it. They're interested in going out and building on it and making it their home, yes.
And if it was speculated that the road to access it be maintained so that emergency vehicles could pass fire trucks, ambulance, as needed, that they would keep it where they could get in and out comfortably?
Well, that's a mouthful because I don't know what size trucks may come out later on or anything else. I mean, they're going to maintain, it will be maintained in such a manner that people that can be used for ingress egress to this property and also to the property that's directly behind it.
Right.
But as far as trying to say that we're on a blacktop or a gravel or something like this, I don't think that's going to be the case.
We're talking about limbs encroaching so that it would prevent a fire truck, for instance, from getting to that if it was an emergency.
Well, I think if the zoning board feels required that, then we would make sure that that takes place.
That's all I need. Any other questions or comments from the board at this time? Thank you very much, Mr. Moser.
Thank you, thanks, gentlemen.
Is there anyone else here in support of this application? Is there anyone here in opposition to this request or has questions about what is being requested?
My name is Kenneth Barrett. I have a piece of property on Clatson.
I need to get your address.
6711 Clatson. I only have one question. If you're requesting that variance only for one residential or are you trying to do some kind of, you know, development?
The information that we have at this point is that it would be a single family residence on one two acre approximate lot. Now, if they go in there and wanted to cut it into smaller pieces, that would be entirely up to whatever code is allowed, but I don't think they're going to be allowed to. They'd have to come back before us. I didn't think they could go ahead and make a subsidy because it's number one, it's not big enough yet. Number two, it really is going to be a problem if they don't have a real good access road and that's when engineering and safety and all that's going to become a real problem if it's more than one house.
I have a question. Because it's zone our one case, or two houses? Could be two lots?
Without, they have to come before you guys.
Okay.
Because this variance is for this 2.6.
One lot, okay.
May I please, the board, it's not the intent of my client to subdivide this thing into a bunch of little lots.
Thank you. Any other questions or is there anybody else here in opposition to what is being requested? Was there any contact to your office concerning this case?
Yes, sir. I did get a couple of calls and their concerns were a subjugation going to happen.
All right. Anybody have any more discussions? Any questions? Can I entertain a motion on this request?
I suppose that we approve this very inciting D and H of the UL DC and also having the fact that insurance should be assessed dealing with the emergency vehicles and exit, ingress, exit.
I have a motion on the floor from Dr. Housel to grant the request as presented with the provision that the entrance and exit lane be maintained to accommodate emergency vehicles, et cetera. Do I have a second? I have a second, Mr. McCall. All in favor, raise a hand. Good night, let's get along with it. Okay, next case that we'll call is city case, the application 2017-01 Ballast Country Club, 3500 Country Club Road. Yes. Please let the record show that Nancy is going to recruit her, recuse herself from this discussion, being that she has an interest in the country club.
This is the first time, what, three, four, five months?
Yeah, you, do you remember how to do this?
I almost forgot under staff orders. It came back to me now. Okay. Your one home city case, or case to the Ballast Country Club, located 3500 Country Club. It is about 338 acres, just a little bit over. Most of it is R15, which is a single family residence with a little bit of community commercial in theirs level. What they were looking to do is, it's a fully developed country club, tennis courts, country club facilities, recreation, things of that nature. They are building a building about 8,300 square foot, a 65 by 127 foot metal building to store golf carts, things of that nature. They intended to leave it metal. Metal buildings, metal facade, sheet metal, exposed sheet metal is prohibited in anything other than an industrial or manufacturing district. Basically, so when you're driving down our commercial corridors or residential corridors, you don't see an industrial look. It requires it to be clad in something, stone, brick, glass, things of that nature. So what they did when this regulation was brought to their attention, they submitted an addendum that showed the building to be clad with split face masonry, masonry beams so that they could get construction started and pursue the variance while they were construction, while they were working on the building. So staff reviewed it. We do realize that the point is to, so when you're driving down the country club, you're driving down Northfield Austin Patterson, our residential neighborhood, so it doesn't look like the industrial part. So staff reviewed it. We understand that metal is what they wanted to use, understand that. Unfortunately, there is no hardship, hardship in something beyond design's control, something took a brad, something beyond design's control. So unfortunately, staff could not support the variance request right then and there. We do understand that there might be some perception in these circumstances. Driving down where this building has been built, there is a pretty dense area of vegetation where visibility of this building might be limited. So if the board is so inclined to potentially grant the variance, we'd like to see three conditions being placed on that approval. One, that it's for this particular building only. Number two, that this stand of bravery of frame state can be left. And number three, that the opposed sheet metal siding of the building be a dark green to further, or have a defer, increase the visibility of this building. Does the board have any questions?
Anybody have any questions or comments at this time?
So just so I understand, the plans are approved for them to go forward as a split face building?
And keep in mind that the whole building is not required to be solid, just the front alone, country club, and can get back. The rest of it is allowed to be metal.
If this was being built in the CC portion, would it be allowed?
No. The only place, the only city districts where metal siding is allowed to be visible is in one and two zones. So even if it were heavily in the safety, it still would require variance for some sort of a solid.
So visible from the road or, I guess what I'm understanding is, you said they only have to wrap it 10 feet back with block and then they can change to metal? What is the, what allows them to do that? Why would, I mean, because one whole side of this, really two, at least two sides of this are going to be seen from the road?
The regulation made makes that only the front of the building. And can be back on the inside.
Think about it, because I'm saying obviously it wouldn't be seen to sides of the building. He'd be seeing the front and then the sides would be next to their neighbors.
Well, we're looking at the back of the building, correct? Because the front of the building is to be facing the road so that they can pull in the golf carts, right? I mean, you all talked about just breaking the whole thing. I mean, is it just not feasible in terms of the cost?
That would be a question for the representatives. The only requirement is that the park facing the front yard can be back on the side.
How about like concrete side? Is that allowed? They still won't spend money?
That would be a question.
You can ask a question.
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
May I have a number?
You have a better question today?
What about Helen?
What would it do with the needs of the minds of considering these conditions and brought to this meeting?
They, the staff report was emailed to the contact folks and Matt did talk on the phone to them, but I do not know if they had, if there was any group, I don't know the way yet.
Okay. Representative might be able to answer that question?
So the plans that are, because the plans that we have are fairly small and they're very hard to read. The plans that are in y'all that are approved now, is it, as you described, it's only split face and then 10 feet back on each side or is the whole thing wrapped?
Front, 10 feet back on each side.
How tall is the building, that's what you're requiring?
I didn't know, it was unclear whether they had put it in just showing the whole thing wrapped as split face already or it's just the required.
I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions, any other discussion? Thank you very much, Tracy. Is there anyone here in support of the applications or so please come to the lectern?
Yeah, I know a society in here as well, too.
I'm Brad Dawson, 2611 North Patterson, I'm the president of the country club. Let me see if I can clarify a little bit what Tracy said. So metal buildings are allowed under the LDR and several some of the, including the park that they were, the requirement is, is that on the front facade, the way the LDR finds front yard is the yard facing the river. So on that front facade, 10 feet back, it has to be clad in some sort of color. It can be brick, it can be masonry, it can be split face. It could be vinyl siding, the concrete siding, there's a ton of things to do. That particular, you can look, see the tennis courts down by Country Club Road. Currently on that site, I want to give you a little history so that you understand what we're doing. We have completely spent about $2.5 million on the building to the right and a lot of stuff here over the last two years. This building is being built and housed the carts, which are under our old building, which will eventually be torn down. All of these buildings, we're about also renovate the tennis building next door, renovate the pool building. All of these buildings will be, and if you've been by there, the big building now is a tasteful sort of dark gray with a dark roof and it looks a lot better than I think it did when it was just brick. So all of these buildings will eventually kind of fall into that color scheme and make them out. The site that this is on currently was a storage site and had two or three trash dumps. It also has about 15 yards of dense vegetation between the site and Country Club Road. Making it all nice and, I'm going to hand you all, you all can pass this around. Those are pictures taken from either side, standing on Country Club Road and in front of the site. So you can see, you get a good idea of what vegetation looks like. The reason this became an issue for us is just, you know, if we had not gone in through this variance process, I want you to realize that under the LDR and the existing regulations, we could have put bright pink vinyl siding on the front of this building and left all the trash dumps you're sitting over it. And of course, you know, we don't want to do that and that's not our intent, never has been. We're trying to actually make this a better site. We have spoken with all the residents along Country Club Road with the exception of one, Ms. Brown, who owns the property. We're looking at Country Club Road a little bit, had it wanted to the right, to the south of the property. But all of those people are fine with this request. We described exactly what we're going to do, exactly how it's going to turn out. They're all pleased that the trash dumps are happily moved to the interior of the property well away from the road so that it won't be visible by any residential properties at all. All that will be here is a building. And this building, but for the definition of front yard and the LDR, this building, the actual front of this building faces the interior of our property, it does not face Country Club Road. So all that is will be on Country Club Road without any plating is the metal building inside. So and that will, if you've ever ridden by there, it will be, the only place it will be visible is the main drive to the Country Club when you have to turn in. You'll be able to see it a little bit just past that through, if you're familiar with that place, there's two old brick columns over there from plantation way back when. There certainly, you can see it there. But our plan is, and we're perfectly fine with this as a condition, was to put in four or five, you know, Leyland cypress type trees there to even cover the floor. So the only place, once you put those in, they grow a little bit. The only place it would be visible is actually turning to the club. It is virtually invisible from Country Club Road standing directly from me to that wall, all you'll see is the color. Now, one of the things that I want to make sure we point out, you know, Tracy and staff suggested that, and I think in our original application, which was before we finalized planning for the building, that this was going to be a dark green building because we have another metal building on the interior property that's mantished, it's dark green. However, we learned that for no additional cost and we have actually ordered a building that would be virtually the same color as all the rest of the buildings. It'll be a darker gray, have a dark roof on it. So it's going to, and we've called Ron Allen, who lives across the street, we've talked about Evans who lives across the street, Dr. Hobbie who lives across the street or has a house across the street, doesn't live there. And then Dr. Rome is a lot further down the street and told all of them about this and they're fine with that. And we've shown them the color, we've shown them the color of the roof. So it is an impossibility, this one, without spending about $60,000, this cost of building, to get a different color, get the dark green, as suggested as a possible, as a possible condition. So I would appreciate that not leaving conditions, we're going to back up and flip it, that's double kill this request. But I want you to understand, we are leaving that existing buffer, we're adding, adding to that buffer, buffer, whether you put it as a condition or variance or not. But this, just adding a siding, which, you know, cheapest siding, we had vinyl siding to cover 10 feet, 90 side in the back elevation would be about between $5,000 and $8,000 change. But really, absolutely no purpose. There's nobody against this from a residential standpoint, there's no, there's no view of it. We had this exact issue come forward planning permission a couple of months ago and I didn't understand it then. I don't understand this particular provision, LDR, I don't think it's especially, especially right along with the definition of front yard. It does not meet every situation. So I would appreciate if y'all were considering the variance request, you know, we're perfectly fine with leaving the buffer and we're perfectly fine with adding to it. We cannot at this point accept any sort of color, which is not called vulnerability or anything like that, that would be just a complete condition. So if there's any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
How tall was the building? Did I carry it? 10 foot? 10 foot. 10 foot E height?
10 foot E height in the pitch.
What's the pitch at the top?
It's a very small pitch. I think it's one toil, is that right? It's not flat, but it's, you know, there's not going to be a whole lot of roof to be seen, which you're well away from the building.
So you're saying that if you, what's the square footage on the building?
65 by 1.7, below 8,000.
8,000? It's pretty large.
But if you go there and look at it, I mean, it is not, only it's out of character and especially once we finish the additional renovations, it'll look part of a cohesive campus, we believe. And look, I mean, we're going to landscape around it, we've got, you know, moved the trash dumps. I think it will end up looking tons better than what it's there now, which is just basically raw storage and traction.
When it was originally submitted, it was specified it was only green.
Right. But there's no, there's no, there's no requirement to specify color in the LDR.
Where's the detention block going to be located?
It is between the, it's just basically just a north, the car building between it and the main drive where the road's proposed car building. Everything is sloped to that detention and the detention is only, maybe this big?
Is it the area that was out there that had the three palm trees sit in the middle of it?
There's one palm tree and there's another location and there's three that are on the edge of, so you don't have to down the road.
So there will be a large open area right next to this?
Yes, but if you, if you're familiar, when you come into the main Uh, yes, but if you, if you're familiar, when you come into the main drive down the left side, there are bushes that are, I would say five feet high, um, and the rest of it is, is a grass area with, with trees, there's probably, I would say, pine trees in there.
Do you have a color chip or anything to show up what gray is?
I do not, it's, if you're familiar with the, the color we painted the main building, it's a, I would say it's between a light, a light and dark gray, kind of a medium gray, that would be basically the same color.
I have a couple of comments.
Okay.
And one is maybe a question. If it had vinyl siding, they'd be good. They could put a rainbow flag on the side and vinyl siding. They only have one front yard, this is their front yard, you're like, you don't have two front yards, so then you have this problem on two sides, and some people live in town, they have two front yards, this is a problem.
Which I think is a problem with the LDR, but that's, that's one.
Okay, and as far as green, I remember when I was a kid, I read a book, it was about building a fort in the woods, and, uh, um, children built a fort in the woods and they painted green so that they couldn't see it. But when it got to be winter, it stood out like a sore thumb because it was green, because what you really want to paint a fort in the woods is brown or gray, like a tree trunk color. So, I'm moving.
Those pictures were taken about two weeks ago, before everyone else started taking off. That's a normal condition, as you know, that's a real, that's going around here.
I guess my biggest concern is, as you're coming down this road.
Yes.
Where the existing, uh, original columns are that sit there, um.
That's what.
You're going to see the broad side of this building, you're, you're going to be coming down this road and you're, I agree that you're not really going to see the end front, in front of this building, you're going to be seeing the long broad side of this building, and the roll doors and everything else, because as you can see, the vegetation kind of starts to thin out as it, as it heads up there, and then, like you said, there's going to be a large detention pond out here in front of it also, which will be a broad open area, which I assume will just be grassed.
That's exactly where we're talking about, planting Leyland cypress, so we'll go away with that need.
Okay, so that.
You're, you're familiar with, I guess Leyland cypress.
Right.
Pretty dense vegetation.
So, that's what I was going to ask, is are you planning to, from this corner on up, to completely block that beach?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're, we're also talking about taking down those columns because they're decrepit and that will fall around, we're just trying to determine if there's any historical issue with us taking it down, so, and, and nobody seems to know the answer to the question. But if we do that and plant these, I mean, those columns appear to have, look very good, none of that does, and we think we might call it, that would be a disaster.
I have your comment. Um, y'all know that I'm a master gardener, one of the things I really care about is native plants in landscape. It would be my preference to do a planted native plant rather than, say, uh, Leyland cypress, I know that they grow fast and are bushy, they have some issues because they can get a rust, and, um, no caterpillars eat them, because no caterpillars eat them, you must burps. Um, and if you planted something that was native in landscape, mine would be heavier. A wax myrtle.
I'm not a gardener.
A, a wax myrtle or a holly, um, something that would be native to South Georgia, you know, show off the great plants we have, you know, put some red ones out.
Any other questions, any other questions?
I do want to emphasize that every resident but one chooses out of town that will have any beautiful as building as such. I don't have, I have letters from them, I'm only going on my, my reputation, but we have talked to all of them, all of them, okay.
Okay, before you leave, Tracy, could you back it up one time? Uh, go forward, one more. There. Uh, would you have a problem if it was specified that from the western edge of the building, wrapped around, that there be significant plantings of multiple types of vegetative buffer, so that you, year round, so that stayed green somewhat, augustums or whatever?
I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying, but, you know, two things.
We're still trying.
Where and significant are two, I understand.
I understand, I'm big. The point is, I understand that the people that live across the street say they don't have a problem, but we still look at it from the statistics, from people that are driving down that route, specifically westbound, and they look and they say, Lord, there's a monster warehouse right here. If you started here and wrapped around, so that it was concealed with enough to cover it in conjunction with what's already here, and that it be maintained in this setting, that I'm putting in cutting into the LDR.
I will say this, uh, from my, so that, that vegetation probably comes to here now, and it is within, or will be within probably five to seven feet of the building on the backside. I don't know that there's room without cutting some of the existing to plant here, and there may be on the side of here. And there's already five feet here and going here, so.
We would like to see if there's more than five feet.
And there's also trees there, you know, so.
What, what we're trying to do is, yeah, we don't have a lot of winter, and all the leaves don't miss out in the fall. In the summertime, when the ice and green is going to be camouflage pretty good, except what you see on the top of the five, six foot, seven foot is here.
Right.
Isn't there some kind of bamboo that's up there?
There is.
And that bamboo doesn't go away, I think it's pretty much there. The reason, the reason I know that, I used to live across the street, and I used to drive my, my motors, my moped through there, to the tennis courts, and so I know that there's bamboo there.
Most of that motor is bamboo.
Yeah, for noise.
Don't plant any more bamboo.
I got another question. All right, like, I'm just trying to relate this to something that I know, that's Amelia Island Plantation. When you're going down A one A, in Amelia Island, you, you probably know this, plantation, everything's green, the buildings, whatever, they have storage, they have, they have foliage, whatever, but they, everything's green to mesh with the landscape, so you don't drive by and say, oh my God, big old white building, or a gray building. You don't even notice it, it's green, and I can understand why they're trying to say it's green, it should be green. How hard would it be for it to be gray?
Oh, it's a, it's going to work, it's gray, it is going to be gray unless we, it's paid for, it's, uh, it's not a green building. It's, it's a sixty thousand dollar venture to get here.
What a green fence.
Well, look at you not, before we, before we get too far, and I, I don't, I'm not, please don't take me as arguing with it, but the whole purpose we're here is, we are trying to get the most out of four hundred and ninety members of dollars, okay, because we don't, it's not my money, it's not, it's four hundred and ninety, they're trying to save. So, we're talking about trying to save five to seven thousand dollars. So if we plant five thousand dollars worth of plants, we might as well put pink vinyl siding on there. If we put a seven or eight thousand dollar green fence, we might as well put pink vinyl siding on there. You, you understand, I mean, I.
I mean, you put pink vinyl siding, I don't think you remember, it's going to be too harsh. So, I mean, you can write it all you want to, but I mean, it's not, I mean.
What I want you to understand is, I'm not threatening, I'm just telling you what the law allows, what the LDR allows.
Yeah, I, I want to go, I, stop, Brad, I want to go there. Uh, so you have designed in some of your plans to have, uh, some half face something on here that's going to cost eight thousand dollars? Uh, and you're just trying to save the money from that, so you can use it on something else, and then we're going to tell you, and the something else is going to be some plants, Uh, that's, that's sort of where we are. He's going to save money on not having it be the siding that meets the letter of the law, which I can understand why they, they don't want to do that, and we're going to make them do something else, so, it's complicated.
I, I understand your point about sixty thousand dollars, that you have already ordered the building before this was granted, and before it was noted in the original plan, you were going to do green, and then you backed up and changed horses on it.
Right.
If we asked you to spend eight, ten thousand dollars worth of additional plantings, you're not spending sixty, you're spending eight, nine, ten thousand.
No, 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 Alan, he's already, he's spending eight thousand to make it letter on the law.
I just, I just, I just withdraw the variance, but it's on, it's on outside, so, I, that, that's, that's the issue.
That's, that's entirely up to you, if you want to pull the, and make the change, and as long as, as long as the code says ten foot facing the country club, I mean, uh, the wall facing country club, you're ten foot down each side, you totally meet, and we're null and voiding.
But that's, but I'm asking for a variance request. I'm asking for a variance so that we do not have to do that, we are already planning to put in plants to buffer this, to, I mean, there'd be virtually no view of this from Country Club Road when we're finished, has, has, has our plan staying there? And if you ask me to put in the plants down to, to buffer the entire view from Country Club, that's fine, on the interior of the law, I don't think that becomes, you can already see brick gray buildings, or we'll be able to do front Country Club already, and you'll see one more, it'll just happen to be metal instead of brick, and hanging gray brick looks virtually the same as metal from a distance anyway.
Does it have architectural shingles on it? What's the roof look?
It's a metal roof, but it's a dark metal roof, it's a, it's a dark gray, and this is a medium gray inside.
At this point, you know, my concern is to try to camouflage as much as we can of it, because like Paul was saying, so the people driving down the country club, they're not meeting a huge blank gray wall. At least the country club has texture, windows, contours, hooks, we're, we're going to be dealing with a flat metal wall.
Or it won't just be another wall, you're going to be seeing roll doors in it too. There are bigger roll doors in that wall there. So, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a warehouse.
That's the side though, that's not the, that's not the backyard, that's the side.
Well, yeah, but that's what I'm saying, is you're going to see, you know, you're going to see the end wall, and then you're going to see the sidewall, which is a bunch of roll doors.
Any other questions, any other discussion?
Why did they order the, the gray vinyl siding without getting the permit?
Because it's not, you don't have to have a colored permit.
Right, I mean, I agree, but I mean.
Nothing requires us to say, we had said it was going to be a red.
I mean, you can do a pink, I'm sure you're, you're, you're going to, I remember talking to me happy about.
I, I say that to make the example, LDR says nothing about color, so if, if you can put out of your mind, per second, color, there's nothing in the regulations that allow any designation of color. Now what we're doing here, you understand, I mean, we're, we're trying, we're going to redo every building that you can see from Country Club Road, and they will all be a uniform color. And at the end of the day, probably three years from now, this will look like a tremendous facility, instead of, you know, looking at the hot spots we have now, an old, you know, red brick with an old border on it that's there now. So, and anyway, I, I don't know if you can see in the vision, or I've had it, or they described it, but I can promise you, in three years, it will look much better than it does now. And this will be one step in the process, and that's the reason for the color, is we believe that once you have that building, a gray tennis building just behind it, a gray pool building, you know, in the distance, and then another building gone with a better view, which you'll be able to see from Country Club, all of that taken together will look much better than four gray buildings and a green one standing there from up, which is what you can see. No matter how we buffer, you're going to see this somewhat from every direction you go on Country Club Road. So whether it's green, black, red, or gray, you're going to see.
Right, so can't you understand their trepidation about driving down the road and having to see a big old white building?
It's not going to be a white.
Well, it's be gray, white, grayish, white.
And you probably won't even notice it when all this is buffering, it'll all finish that buffering. Like, I would argue to you that you would, you would, unless you knew it was there, unless you went to the Country Club, you would hardly ever see it from Country Club Road, or Country Club Road, I should say.
Any other questions, any other discussion?
Do I have here? I do have a question, would, I mean, would it be a hardship to just meet the requirements, um, as far as, uh, the ten feet siding, I mean, the siding and everything there?
It's just a five to eight thousand dollar decision, that's all what we're trying to save a little bit of money, so we're going to go to LDR and continue making this better.
Anyone else here in support? Was there anybody, is there anybody here in opposition to this request? Was there any contact to the office concerning the nature of the signs?
Yes, we did, we have one lady, and I did not get her name, she lives across the street from where the building is approached, yeah, she did not want it to be a metal building because she did not want it to look her words, she did not want to look at an industrialized building across the street from her house. She said that she couldn't come to the meeting because of medical, she had some medical difficulties.
Okay.
Did that heal them?
Okay, any other questions, any other discussions? Keep in mind that we are technically dealing with the narrow end of the building facing Country Club, which is, the front yard is hard as LDRC is concerned, ten feet down each side, and with whatever buffering is there, or buffering added, uh, originally they had said they were going to paint it green, now we're dealing with gray. And I guess that's pretty much the beat of the situation.
Great, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion.
Would you make a motion?
I make a motion that we grant the variance with the following conditions, that the variance is only applied to this building, not any other building on the Country Club property, that the existing buffer along Country Club Road be maintained, and that additional buffering be made with native plants of an evergreen variety.
You need to be a little more specific as far as, um, natural plants?
Uh, natural plants, of the, of the type of, um, of native holly, um, wax myrtle, there's a lot of evergreen cherubs that will grow to be tall, ten feet or more, that, um, and let's see, um, what's our regular side yard, uh, when we do plant density, when you're up against a residential area? How many plantings do you have to do? Don't know. Nobody's got the number, how many plantings are supposed to, like, if we were, if we're residential against residential, national, if we're commercial against residential, what does the density of the buffering have to be? How many plants are on there?
Well, there's, there's a setback that comes into there as well, but in this case it doesn't matter because we're dealing.
Very, very, but I, I don't want to just have them say, well, we put three plants up, and that was enough, I wanted to actually buffer, you know, be enough plants so that it covers up what they're doing.
Tracy, I think it's ten foot plant stake up there.
Could she's asking how many plants in?
How, how many, how close are the plants? I don't want just three plants, you know, I want a sufficient number of plants to cover the building.
Where are, where are your plants exactly?
Yeah, well, so what, I want to make that a condition so that it actually happens. That's my motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and I'm not going to try to restate it, Tracy, there's, there's a lot going on in there, if you could write it down, if she's doing it. Okay, uh, without specifying how many trees or plants, it's just, we needed to see. Uh, do I have a second?
Sir.
Would that you will?
Yes.
Second, Dr. House, will all in favor raise a hand?
Two.
All opposed, three to two, it passed. If there's any concern about what we're trying to accomplish, please touch base with Matt and Tracy. Like, part of the problem is, is it's not supposed to create a, uh, pre-existing type thing, so that somebody comes in and says, you let them do it now, I'm going to do it, theoretically, each case stands on its own regardless of what we did or did not allow in the past.
And, and I'll just say, the reason that I, I have it is because I want those native plants. By the way. Otherwise, I'd just say, put the side up and you go, meet the rule, but I want the native plants.
Okay. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Please make a note to it. Okay, uh, at this point, other business approval will commence for the March seventh meeting. I do not see anything jump out and say, "Change me," but anybody else see anything? Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion to accept the minutes.
I have motion to Dr. House to accept the minutes as presented. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second, all in favor, raise a hand. Good to go, you now, so any new business, old business, any of these talk.
Um, yes, Chairman, I did put a letter at your desk, um, and basically it's a letter in support of Gretchen's reaplement to the board.
What a bitch.
We did get one, um, applicant for Dr. House's seat. And next month, um, May seventh meeting will be Dr. House's last meeting, so maybe we can bring some cupcakes or something.
Yeah.
Just to show our appreciation for, for the years you served, um, but I am planning to take this for the commission, either their last meeting in this month or their first meeting in May. So if you can sign this letter, we'll put that as part of our agenda.
Okay, is anybody on the board, just in case you haven't seen anybody on the board feel like this is accurate, that we're not putting words in your mouth?
Try not to laugh out loud. It was pretty humorous.
I just, I wanna make sure that this is not going against somebody else's feelings.
What? It could be, it could be. It's down there, it's gonna pop.
Because this, we are submitting...
Or they wanna make any changes to it, I can make any changes to it.
We are submitting this on behalf of the board, not...
Yes.
Okay, based on, the majority of the ones that are here are ready, please submit it. I will sign it before I leave, so you can have it.
Okay.
Any other new business, old business, city business, county business, nobody's business?
I don't have anything else.
We're starting our streak next month on zero cases, so it'll be the car model I showed next month.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your participation and your service. How we stand, gentlemen?